All right, I'm gonna do that a couple times. We're gonna get started Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We are here for two bills today. First, Council Bill 23-0381, Ordnance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2024. After that, we will do Mayor and City Council Resolution 23-0383, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, June 30, 2024. Couple quick housekeeping items. Everyone, please note that the AV systems in the council chambers have been updated. Your microphone is on, but to speak, you will need to unmute yourself. To do so, please press the button on your right. It will have a person icon. When you see a red light, your microphone is transmitting. When you are finished, please press the button again to mute yourself. The microphones can pick up quite a bit, so it is best practice to mute when you are not speaking. They call that a hot mic. Also, since Councilwoman Clark has retired, I haven't had to do that warning. Please turn your cell phones to mute, or vibrate, or some other form of silent. Okay. So basically, what we're gonna do today, we're here for the budget overview from BBMR and from city schools. We do this every year. The committee's gonna reconvene at 4:00 PM today. We have a sale of property bill that we'll be hearing. And then the committee will reconvene again at 6:00 PM this evening. And that will be for a separate bill, which is the constant yield. And that's what's known as Baltimore City Council Taxpayers Night. That's where the committee will give members of the public an opportunity to voice any concerns or suggestions that they have for the budget. Council will not engage in discussion. We may ask a clarifying question, did you say 13 or 31? But we'll not be engaging in back-and-forth discussion. Really, the purpose of tonight is for us to just listen. So with that, I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined in my far left, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, Member of the Committee; Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We also have representatives from, on behalf of Mayor Brandon Scott, as well as Council President Nick Mosby. With that, I think we are ready to get right into it. I'm gonna turn it over to the Budget Director, Ms. Larson.
Am I good? There we go. This is very, very nice. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here before the committee to talk more about the BOE recommended fiscal '24 budget. Many of you have seen a lot of the content that I'll be presenting today, but hoping today to walk through just some context for how we balance the city's fiscal '24 budget, what were some of the factors that we had to work through as we worked through the projected deficit. I know that there's been a lot of interest regarding vacancies in the city's budget, so I'll be talking a little bit about trends that we've seen with vacant positions going back to the start of fiscal '22. Then I'll quickly talk about some highlights regarding general fund revenues and expenditures, and then wrap up by giving some highlights regarding some of our other funds, including utilities, grants, and the capital budget. So again, in terms of our highlights, as you all know, the city had to balance about a $64 million budget gap as part of this year's budget. Our revenues were growing by about 4.6%, compared to the expenditures that were growing by 8%. Much of that expenditure growth was due to the increase in the local share for schools costs that are established by state funding formulas. When we looked at how the city balanced the $64 million gap, we deployed two tactics that were associated in order to get to balance. A portion of the savings, $24.6 million, was realized through a series of cost savings or increases to locally controlled revenue. So some of those initiatives include increasing the savings that we're realizing from vacant positions, targeting expenditure reductions in agency budgets. This was both a combination of targeting areas of traditional underspend, but then also looking at how we were calculating inflation and increased costs as part of fiscal '24 and looking to refine those estimates. Reducing our, making a one-time reduction to the city's contribution to our rainy day and OPEB funds. Again, that's just a partial reduction. It doesn't take those reductions all the way down to zero. And then looking at ways that we could potentially begin to implement tax credit reform to increase revenue, and then looking at ways that we could redeploy some of our traffic cameras to better align with public safety outcomes. Those initiatives got us $24.6 million of savings. The balance of the budget is being, will be balanced through the use of city fund balance. I do just want to note, in the preliminary budget, we were assuming that we'd have to use about $39.4 million of fund balance. In the final state budget, the city received $10 million of support from the state to help fund our increase for the local share next year. And so we'll actually be using $29.4 million of fund balance rather than that 39 that was initially projected in the preliminary budget. So while this was a difficult budget year where we had to look for ways to save money, the city was able to make some targeted investments in some high priority areas. The first is around fleet. So obviously, fleet and equipment costs are one of the areas that's been very much impacted by both the supply chain issues, but then also with what we're seeing in inflation. Every year, the city replaces a portion of our fleet through what we call the Master Lease Program. And so traditionally, we've borrowed about $25 to $26 million to replace fleet assets every year. Next year, we'll be allocating $35 million for fleet equipment replacement. DGS thinks that that will increase their purchasing power by about 28% in terms of addressing some critical fleet needs. That will be really important in places like DPW, DOT, and the Fire Department. There's also investment in women and minority-owned businesses. This has traditionally been a service within the Law Department. In fiscal '24, we're increasing funding and creating a standalone agency that will be focused just primarily on connecting those firms with different business opportunities, whether it's through city procurements or other local opportunities here in Baltimore. There's also investment in services for older adults. There's funding for seven additional positions in the Health Department within the Senior Center Program. This additional staffing at the city's Senior Center will be targeted towards connecting older adults with different programs and services provided for that population in our community. There's also funding to begin work for the standalone Department of Services for Older Adults. That will be started in fiscal '24 with an Executive Director position and a planning grant that will really outline the future vision for that agency. And then the budget continues to make investments in the cities in working towards reducing the number of vacant buildings throughout the city. There's funding for three additional positions in the Housing Department to continue focusing on the NREM work around property acquisition. And there's also funding for a demographer position that will really be focused at looking at trends going backwards and forwards to inform policy decisions. When we look at the fiscal '24 budget by the numbers, the city's budget is up by about $252.1 million year-over-year. That's about a 6.1% increase. When we look just at the general fund budget, the recommended budget is just under $2.2 billion, or an increase of $113.9 million, a 5.5% increase. Just want to talk quickly about what's happening with the city's local share for schools. Now, again, fiscal '24 is the second year under the new framework for the Blueprint for Education. The city's cost share next year will be going up by $79.3 million. Our local share in fiscal '23 was $313 million. Next year, it'll be just over $392 million. That means that in the first two years of the blueprint, the general fund support went up by about $129 million. Next year, the school's funding in terms of the city's budget, it'll represent about 18% of the total general fund. When we look at the long-term trends and what's happening with school funding, again, our long-term projections around what was happening with the blueprint was based off of fiscal analysis that was prepared by the Department of Legislative Services at the state level, where they had anticipated a big jump in the first year, and then more modest increases of $10 to $15 million in the years after that. But what we've seen is actually there were, we had the year-one increase, and then we saw that larger increase that was unanticipated in the second year. So what that means, if we're using DLS analysis as our benchmark, where we'll be in fiscal '24 in terms of our funding for schools is where we thought we would be in fiscal '29 under the fiscal analysis that accompanied the Kerwin legislation. In terms of what's happening here, there's two components of the school's formula that's really driving that change. There's the Education Effort Index, and then compensatory education. The biggest driver of the higher increases in this education effort adjustment, and this is a portion of the school formula that takes a look at local tax base and compares all of the jurisdictions in Maryland against each other, comparing tax base against what they're contributing towards schools. And so when they're indexed together, cities fall into different tiers. Previously and historically, the city had always received a 100% credit for this program. We were in Tier 1. In fiscal '24, we've fallen out of Tier 1, and so we've gone into Tier 2, which means where we previously got a 100% credit, now we're getting a 35% credit. And so that is really the big unexpected change that we were not anticipating in fiscal '24 that really drove up the school's number. The other piece that's happening here is in the compensatory education component of the formula. And this is where the formula takes into account enrollment in free and reduced lunch. Now, in terms of how the state formula looks at poverty among school districts, there was a change in methodology from using free and reduced lunch enrollment to Medicaid. And so what we saw was that there was more students that fell into this category than there were previously. And again, as the city gets compared to other jurisdictions, there were higher jumps in terms of Medicaid enrollment in some of the other jurisdictions. What we saw in Baltimore was not much of a change. So now shifting gears and talking a little bit about vacant positions and how vacant positions flow into how we think about the budget. So before we look at some trends in terms of what's happening, I just want to talk a little bit about how vacancies impact the budget and how we have to kind of look at, not only look at the number of vacancies, but look at a couple of other factors to really understand what's going on. The first is overtime spending. So in some of our cities, in a number of our city services, we have daily minimum staffing requirements in order to provide the service. And so what that means is that if we don't have enough people to hit the staffing model for the daily minimum staffing, we're filling those shifts with overtime rather than with a person earning their base wages. And so where we have agencies with really high vacancy rates and daily minimum staffing, what we're seeing is that in some cases, the costs for overtime that we're seeing in those agencies has now started to surpass any sort of savings that we were realizing from having the positions vacant. The other thing to take into consideration is contractual staffing. So in some cases, if an agency is unable to fill a position, they'll utilize a contract staffing agreement to bring somebody in to fill that role. This happens for a variety of reasons. This can be for hard-to-fill classification. It can be sort of to help bring in additional resources where a service is dramatically understaffed. But again, agencies will typically keep the funding for the position in the budget and proceed with the contractual staffing, because in most cases, their preference would be to have a full-time position. And so they want to maintain that flexibility by having that authorized position that's funded. And then finally, we do assume some level of turnover in the city's budget in terms of how we budget for our positions. So typically, what we try to do here is where there's agencies that have historically had high ebbs and flows in terms of the number of vacancies, we've built in some sort of level of assumed savings that takes into account that there's gonna be some level of natural turnover. I mentioned earlier that one of the ways that we, one of the initiatives to balance the budget was increasing savings from realizing, savings from vacant positions. And this is sort of how we've done that. We've looked at agencies and where their vacancies are, and we increased in terms of what we were assuming for savings by $5 million. I do just want to note the number of, the level of budgeted turnover savings in the budget is higher than $5 million. $5 million was just the increase that was part of the actions taken by the mayor to balance the budget. Now, this slide here is showing us what vacancies look like by union, going back to the start of fiscal '22 through May 1st of this year. And so you can see, this top line is Cub, then this dark purple line is Police, then we have MAPS, AFSMI, Fire, and then all other agencies down below. And so you can see the union with the highest number of vacancies is Cub, and that has also been the agency where we've sort of seen, like, that's one of the unions where we've seen sort of a continual uptick. I do want to note that this vacancy number for Cub does include our crossing guard positions, so it includes crossing guard supervisors, but also part-time crossing guards that are only with us for a portion of the fiscal year. When we look at Police, again, we can see that this is another one of those areas where we've seen sort of one of the higher increasing trends, especially as we've moved into fiscal '23. In terms of MAPS, MAPS has sort of started to steady out in terms of their number of vacancies throughout fiscal '23, but that's after sort of steadily increasing in fiscal '22. AFSMI has been pretty consistent throughout this reporting period, hovering around 200 vacancies. And then Fire has also sort of seen ebbs and flows, but we've seen that number consistently trend up for the second half of fiscal '23. Now, within this, when we look at this further by just classification, we can see that 23 classifications out of about 450 represent 60% of the vacancies in the general fund budget. These classifications have more than 10 vacant positions. Those classifications are Assistant State's Attorneys, CDL Drivers 1 and 2, Crime Lab Techs, Crossing Guards, again, that's a part-time position, Deputy Sheriffs, Emergency Dispatchers, EMTs, Fire Emergency Vehicle Drivers, Firefighters, Housing Inspectors, both entry and senior, Laborers, Office Support Specialists 1 and 2, Operations Officers 1 and 5, Paramedics, Police Sergeant, Rec Leaders, and Solid Waste Workers. So again, these are, these 10 vacancies sort of represent the largest concentration of vacancies in the city's overall budget. So quickly now, just talking about the city's revenue, general fund revenue numbers. Again, I'm just gonna go quickly through this. Many of you have seen this information. The general fund revenue in fiscal '24 is $2.2 billion. The largest share of our general fund revenue is property tax, followed by income tax, and then highway user revenue as the third-largest source. One thing to note within our property tax, the fiscal '24 budget captures reassessments in Group 2, that's the middle portion of the city. Overall, those assessments were up by about 21.6%. This represents the 10th consecutive year of assessment increases and the largest increase for any group during the last 10 years. And one thing to note here is that this is our first reassessment that has taken place since the real estate boom that we saw in 2021 and 2022. When we look at income tax, income tax is projected to be up by about 3.9% or $16.7 million. We look at the actual number of individuals who are filing income tax locally in the city, we can see that there is actually an overall decline of about 7,400 filers. But what we're seeing is that there is a larger decline in individuals making less than $60,000, and we're seeing an increase in the number of filers that make more than $60,000. So what that means is, while we have an overall reduction in the number of individuals filing income taxes, the sort of overall wages that they're claiming are increasing. The other thing that has been a bit of good news within this area is that the city continues to see strength and growth in the unemployment market. In December, we reached the lowest point since January of 2019. Just also want to note, the fiscal '24 budget also reflects the higher allocations through the Highway User Revenue Program. That's the state program that passes on funds to the city. This is the second year of receiving the higher allocations. We are projecting that the city's HUR revenue will be up by about $23.4 million or 13.8%. Do just want to note that while our allocation is increasing, this is something that we are closely monitoring with state partners, because out of the five components that drive the HUR number, three of those five components are actually seeing declines, registration, titling tax, and fuel tax. And those declines are offset by the share of corporate income tax that goes into the Highway User Revenue Funding Formula. Transfer and Recordation Tax, especially in fiscal '22, was an area of real strength for the city's budget. We are projecting that it will be up by about 6.8 million or 7.6% over the fiscal '23 budgeted amount. This assumes that the real estate market in fiscal '24 will be a more normal real estate market than what we had seen in '21 and '22. And so really, we're anticipating that the real estate market will look more like what it did in fiscal 2019. The other thing that's, in addition to activity, the other thing that's really helping, the Transfer and Recordation Tax, is the overall values of properties in the city are higher. And so because these are a percentage-based tax that gets paid, as now that the properties are worth more, that also has a positive impact on the taxes that come through for And now I will pivot and talk quickly about expenditures. So the, as I mentioned, the overall operating budget is about $3.5 billion. You can see that the general fund represents about 61% of the budget. When we look at where those dollars are going in the budget, about just under 42% is dedicated to personnel. One of the things that we closely monitor is what's happening to the city's fixed costs. And these are the things that we are contractually or mandated to pay. This is things like our pension costs, things like our contributions to schools, our debt costs, that sort of thing. Much of the work that was done through the city's 10-year financial plan was to drive down fixed costs, really with the goal of maintaining as much discretion for policymakers in the city's budget as possible. And so what we've seen is that when we looked at fixed costs as a percentage of revenue, which is this middle line, if we go back to fiscal '12, they largely remained flat as a share of revenue. But what we can see is that they are starting, fixed costs alone are starting to creep back up in fiscal '24. And so this will be an important factor as we look to ensure that the budget is in a place of structural balance going forward. As has been our practice for many years, the city's operating budget is presented by pillar, by the pillars of the mayor's action plan. As I mentioned, the general fund budget is $2.2 billion. And so when we look at that by pillar, we can see that public safety, next year, public safety represents about 42.6% of the budget, followed by prioritizing our youth, representing about 23%, and then equitable neighborhood development at 9.3. In terms of some highlights within these pillars, we chatted about the increase for city schools. Do also want to note that for the city's rec centers, the budget includes operating costs associated with the city's inventory of rec centers, and that would include the costs associated with the reopening of the Carroll Park Rec Center that'll happen in fiscal '24. There's also an increase in the hourly wage for young people participating in the Youth Works Program this summer. In building public safety, the budget creates five new positions for the Victim Services Team in the Police Department. These positions were funded through reclassifying long-term vacant civilian positions in the Police Department. There's also funding to create four new safety officer positions in the Fire Department as a result of the Stricker Street Fire Board of Inquiry recommendations, and then continuing funding for the Police Accountability Board created last year. We talked about a lot of these items. Do just want to note that the budget does also include creating up to 10 crews to stabilize solid waste services in DPW. We talked about minority and women-owned business. Do just want to note, for the Right to Counsel Program and housing, the budget reaches the $400,000 funding commitment for this program. This includes focusing on outreach and marketing of the program to make sure residents are aware it's out there. And then we talked about these items. Now, just want to quickly talk through some other funds highlights. Just on the utility funds, DPW will be going in much more detail during their hearing. But do just want to note, the recommended budget reflects the rate increases that were previously approved by the Board of Estimates for Water, Waste Water and Storm. Water and Storm are up by 3%. Waste Water is up by 3.5%. On the grant funds, do just want to note, this was the area of change between the preliminary and recommended budgets. Agencies updated their grant budgets between books. So our federal and state grant assumed budgets are up by about $57.8 million. Most of that increase came in updates that were made between books. This really impacted the budgets for Health, BSIT, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, Planning, and the Police Department. And then finally, I just want to talk quickly about FEMA and how that plays into the city's budget. So since the start of the COVID-19 emergency declaration, the city has been tracking costs associated with our direct FEMA response. And we've been submitting those costs to FEMA and getting reimbursed for those. Because those are on a reimbursement basis, these expenses have never been part of the budget that the city has budgeted, and we've been able to sort of absorb those, knowing that we are getting reimbursed. So this is during, throughout the period, this has included meal and feeding programs, COVID response supplies and equipment, the sheltering of individuals experiencing homelessness in hotels, rolling out the vaccine, and then just sort of general administration. Do just want to note, this emergency period ended on May 11th, and so we are now shifting gears and working to sort of close out our grant with FEMA and kind of get our final reimbursement. We'll receive 90% reimbursement for all the costs that we've incurred in fiscal '23. Do also just want to note, for those expenses that were still incurring costs, that was mainly hotel sheltering, some supplies costs, and some general administration, those costs have been moved to ongoing funding sources that can sustain those programs for now. So with that, I will take any questions from the committee. That's correct. And same with police, it includes both the police officers and then supervisors as well.
My mic is not on, thank you. That's not going to be the first time I make that mistake. So whoever did that, thank you. There are 17 classifications here that have 10 or more vacancies, and then obviously the 23 that make up 60%. So it'd be helpful to know what those other six are. And also to see some direct alignment between what you've noted in terms of recommended balancing actions, in terms of savings from vacant positions. Because $5 million certainly is a fraction of what the value of all those vacant positions are, so just to better understand that alignment.
For sure. So just for context, in fiscal '23, the city's budget had assumed $45 million in savings from vacant positions in the general fund. The final fiscal '24, or the BOE-recommended fiscal '24 budget assumes about $59 million in savings from vacant positions. That $14 million increase, a portion of it was recommended by agencies as part of their proposals where they were reallocating to meet other priorities within the agency. Five of that was incorporated by the mayor's recommendation to realize additional savings.
Got it. Thank you very much. We're going to go to questions from other members. Colleagues, just as a reminder, this is a high-level overview to discuss revenues, expenditures, things like vacancies, other things that were in the presentation. So I would ask that you keep your questions to that scope and not necessarily go into any detail in terms of specific agencies. We will have ample opportunity for that over the course of the next six days or so. With that, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, I see you had a lot of vacancies, which you had mentioned, and what I'm going to talk about is DPW. I just did a job fair at the Oliver Center, I hosted one at Chick Web. Do you have the data on those jobs? Are these vacancies accurate in terms of, they had like four job fairs, have you filled the positions?
Yeah, so the vacancy numbers that I was sharing with you here are, were as of May 1st. We look at this data on the first business day of every month. So it would not pick up any positions that have been filled, you know, over the last four weeks. One of the things that the agencies will be talking to you about, especially some of these agencies with higher numbers of vacancies, is they'll be reporting out in terms of the data from a lot of the career fairs that have been happening, like the one you mentioned, the one that happened at the War Memorial Building recently as well. I think what agencies are seeing, especially agencies with higher vacancies, they're seeing that those career fairs can be incredibly impactful in terms of being able to talk with a large group of our community and being able to extend a lot of offers. What they're really focused on now is making sure that once they make those offers, they successfully get all those people through the onboarding process, all the background screening, that sort of thing, so that they can actually get them into a city slot and get them folded in to our operations.
One more question, Mr. Chair. I want to talk about, I see you have a 90% reimbursement for COVID. My question is, what are we doing in terms of, we keep talking about rec centers.
Yep.
But we don't have the funding for programs for our young people. We talk about basketball, we talk about football, but what about them young people that don't want to play there? When are we going to put more money in the rec centers for program and not just for salaries and budgets? I've been saying this again, and I'm going to have a big mouth about this. Until we put money in program for these rec centers in our city, our young people are not coming in there because there's nothing there to draw them there. We have to talk to them, and we have to make sure we have programs in there, make sure they come to the centers. Because you know what they do? They walk past the centers and go down the harbor. Whatever we doing, and I know how hard wrecking parks work, but whatever we doing is not working. So we need to put more money in every rec center in this city for program, and I don't see that. My other question is, you have other positions you open up in housing. Where is the positions for equity? You cannot practice equity if you don't have equity positions in all these agencies. I keep hearing it over and over. I've been, had a big mouth about equity. Now I hear all these new positions you're creating in housing, what about the other agencies that don't have equity staff? I ain't talking about no one person, I'm talking about the full staff. So if we talk about equity, how we address equity when you only have full staff in all these agencies? I have not heard that at all.
Yeah. So I do want to note that the BOE-recommended budget does make an investment in central staff to focus on citywide equity work in the Department of Equity and Civil Rights. There's three additional positions that have been added to already existing positions in that agency, along with contractual funding to begin, to continue work around the citywide equity assessment. Now, I can say that, you know, agencies have begun to make this investment in equity positions within their budgets, and I think too, you know, many agencies are partnering closely with OECR and the central team that's providing guidance on that work in order to really think about how they build out their shops in order to expand that work. In terms of the rec center programming question, I think Director Moore and his team can talk a lot more about the specifics of how those decisions get made. Do just want to note, in terms of relating that question to FEMA, what we were able to seek reimbursement for associated with COVID-19 was clearly spelled out under the FEMA regulations where they said, here is what a direct cost associated with the pandemic response is, and they defined it. And we were only able to seek reimbursement for city costs that fell underneath that definition.
Thank you.
Colleagues? Councilwoman President? Sorry.
Thank you.
You have to push the button on your right. When it lights up red, you are good to go. When you are done speaking, please turn it off. Repeat that about 40 times next week. For everyone, including myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This wonderful new updated equipment is just wonderful. I apologize for my tardiness. As you were going over, I guess, the overview, was there any mention of the, I know you'll be ironing out the new office of aging. And I think it's important to, I don't know if you've talked about that or if I missed that, but along with that, you know, that's all, for older adults, that's also connected to water increases and all these things, on the billing, on all those different bills. So I think there needs to be some detailed information with all of that because that's very important to our older adult. I know a lot of priority is definitely needed and spent on our youth, but we cannot forget our older adults in the city, and a lot of attention needs to be put on that, especially on paper as well.
For sure. And I can say that, you know, as we did outreach with the community around the fiscal '24 budget, that voice was heard loud and clear from the older adults who live in our community. In terms of that new office that is included in the '24 budget, there's funding for one position and then a planning grant, and the intent is to get somebody on board that is their full duty to think about sort of, not only, I guess, the full landscape of different services that are out there, but also these issues that are impacting older adults in terms of how they're interacting with the city. So that person will be able to come on board, be able to access some planning grant dollars to really do a needs assessment, you know, continue to work with stakeholders on the council and in the community to really come back with some recommendations about, you know, what that office should look like as it grows and expands and what should their focus be. So I think as that all gets stood up in fiscal '24, I think that there'll be a lot of progress that we'll see once that person comes on board.
Thank you. Thanks.
Councilwoman McCray? Councilwoman Oda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have several, but I'll just start with a couple at the moment. We heard recently in the news that Baltimore County is increasing their water rates by 4% or 1/2%, something like that. How does that impact what is in the revenues for us? Obviously, I'm hoping we better get some of that. So I wonder if you have an analysis yet of what that means.
Yes. So a portion of that increase is part of the rate increases that I mentioned, the 3, 3, and 3.5% that are part of just the base rates. In terms of how what Baltimore-
I'm sorry, let me go back to there. So the 3 and a 3.5, I thought were just applicable to city residents. You're also saying that that was applicable to county residents as well?
So that is sort of the overall rates that the budgets for water, wastewater and stormwater were built around. What I would say is I would defer to Director Mitchell and the DPW team in terms of how the surrounding jurisdictions and their rates feed into their budget and to provide that more detailed explanation.
My question though is, is it factored already in the revenues in this budget?
I will, I'll take that question back to DPW and verify and follow up with the committee.
Yeah, because my understanding of how the formula works is that the county can set its own rates, even though it's our water. We'll set that aside for a moment. And then we, half of the, any, you know, capital expenditures and operations, or the expenditures and operations that we have to, the operations and the capital expenditures that we have to spend to be able to send them water, we do get something back. It's half of the capital expenditures and then a percentage of the operating. So I just wondered what that number is. I'm assuming it's included in here, but again, since they increased their, they announced, the county announced an increase in the rates, whether or not that means that we're also going to get additional funding or making sure that those fundings, that the funding that they're supposed to get to us more aligns with what our actual costs are.
For sure. And I'll circle back with DPW and provide a response on that.
Okay, great. And then my second question is around the vacancies. I thought we had like tons of police vacancies. So I'm wondering why that's not included in the chart.
That's a mistake on the chart. So my apologies, and we'll correct that slide and send it out to the committee. There are, as of May 1st, there were 463 officer vacancies.
And so you will include that in an updated chart?
We'll correct that chart, yes.
Okay, so that's officers, because it says sergeants here only at the moment?
Yep, those are out of the, you know, out of that top, that top group of positions, the police ones that rise to the top are officers and sergeants.
Because there's several classifications. So you were doing this by classification, not by department?
Yes.
It would be interesting to see this by department as well. And then I guess the related question to that would be, with the 463 police vacancies, are we realizing savings there with that, or are we just leaving the Police Department alone?
We, in terms of the Police Department's budget assumes about $37 million in turnover savings from vacant positions. I will say when we, right now, when we look at this high number of vacancies, so, you know, as I mentioned, the May 1st number for officers was 463. The July 1st, 2021 vacancy was 194 for that classification. So that's a very dramatic increase in, you know, under, just over a year and a half, essentially. What we're seeing in police is that we have surpassed that spot where we, you know, realize, where we're realizing savings from having vacant positions. And now we're at the point where the cost of having all these vacant positions and having to fill that back with overtime is actually costing us more than what it would cost us to have those positions filled.
But that's traditionally been the case with the police, where we've been, you know, filling that with overtime, and that has been part of the issue.
Certainly, but to this, I mean, the number of vacancies now is much higher than it was, you know, a year ago or even two years ago. And so it's putting even more pressure on, you know, on overtime. And what we're seeing is, you know, there's more pressure in the amount of overtime that's needed to make their shift model work, and it's now being done with a fewer number of, with a lower number of people. And so I think that's something that Commissioner Harrison can talk about too in terms of what that looks like in terms of operations for the Police Department.
So, but then the saving, this $37 million in savings is going, oh, that's on, is going into, is going into overtime, basically?
Yes.
I have more questions, but I will go to the next round.
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. Continuing on this subject, last year, the Police Department, I asked them, I don't know, for the fourth or fifth year in a row, to provide a staffing plan that would essentially maximize use of non-sworn personnel in order to fill in any positions that could be, you know, any work that could be done by non-sworn personnel. Whereas in many cases, we have, at the same time as this high rate of vacancies among sworn personnel, a higher prevalence of sworn personnel doing work that could be done by non-sworn personnel. The Police Department did a pathetic job of responding to the budget request. I was actually, I felt insulted by it, and want to know if BBMR has done its own analysis of how cost savings can be achieved through better management of personnel duties to allocate those to non-sworn personnel maximally.
Yeah. So we have, I mean, we've done high-level estimates on that. I think that that's an area where, you know, as we come out of this budget cycle, that would be one that I would, that I think would be a great area for us to dig into. Because I think we could also look at that in the Fire Department as well in terms of where we have sworn positions doing tasks that could maybe be done by civilian staff. So I think that that's something we could definitely explore more coming out of this budget cycle. What I can say in regards to the police's efforts around civilianization, you know, they did identify a large group of positions as part of the fiscal '23 budget that they would work to civilianize. I want to say that it was 40 to 50 positions that they were working on. And I know that that did experience some delays in terms of getting through the classification process to get all those positions sort of set up correctly so that they could start to fill them out. But I know Commissioner Harrison and his team can provide sort of a status update for what they're seeing with those positions that they've been, with what they've been able to implement so far in fiscal '23. And like I said, that's something that, you know, I take the feedback in terms of something that we'll be digging into more as we come out of this year's process.
Yeah, I would urge you to review the response that the Police Department gave last year to this request. I think you'll find it as patronizing as I did, and that it fails to recognize the point.
Okay.
And instead seeks to kind of defend the status quo of, I would say, fear-mongering by basically portraying the city like falling apart at the seams if we don't have more cops doing more of everything all the time.
Okay. Okay.
The other thing that's been thematic-
Councilman, is that a request?
No, I think I made a point. Thank you. The other thing that's been thematic the last couple of years is the city's failure to get money out the door in a timely fashion. Main Streets hasn't been paid in three-quarters and was not able to get that payment onto the Board of Estimates' agenda last, last week. It's not just one, it's not just the Main Streets in my district, it's like, all of them are unable to get, and it's a piddling sum of money, but it's a clear example of three-quarters of we can't get the money out the door.
Mm-hmm.
How does that reflect in our budget, the inability to get money out? Are we, are we accruing future expenditures that are going to drain down more rapidly than we expected in order to maintain level of service to the city agent, you know, and city services? When or if we ever get our act together in order to streamline the process of being able to actually spend money?
For sure. What I, what I can say on the Main Streets program specifically is I know that Director Lundie, through the Minority and Women's Zone Business Office, they will, you know, Main Streets will be part of that standalone agency moving forward. And I know that's a big focus for him, to make sure that we're improving how that, how the city's support for that program is being administered and making sure that these types of delays get addressed and are not an ongoing issue. In terms of how those issues sort of play out overall in the city budget, I mean, we don't necessarily see that in terms of how we are budgeting expenditures. I will say it's more so some of the things that we see come out at the year-end process, where we identify, you know, commitments and obligations as part of the year-end processing that we need to make sure, you know, can, can carry forward and be addressed in the next fiscal year. The other thing where I, where I think that this is an issue in an area where the city can improve is where we have these expenditures associated with our different grants and really streamlining how we are getting our state and federal grants set up so that we can, you know, get our contracts in place and, you know, ensure that we're getting dollars out the door as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just have a question. I know you had mentioned about 10 DPW crews.
Yes, that's correct.
My question is, how are we hiring 10 people when we haven't filled the positions we have?
So there is funding for 10 additional crews. So that winds up being 37 positions that were, were funded for half of fiscal 24 to help stabilize solid waste. DPW will talk more in detail about their plans for filling and retaining individuals into those spots. But, but much of their work, again, they're one of the agencies that has been getting very creative around using career fairs and these large hiring events to try to get offers out to folks and then to really support them and get them through the onboarding process. I know that they have also been spending a lot of time and effort marketing the CDL incentive program for the classifications, some of which are part of these 10 crews, in order to make those jobs that require a CDL with the city a more attractive, you know, more attractive in terms of compensation.
So my understanding, accounts payable is due to the comptroller's office? Is that the way it is now?
That's correct. So this last fall, the voters approved a council amendment that moved accounts payable from the finance department to the comptroller's office. So that, organizationally, that has already happened. It happened over the winter months. And so what you see in the budget is that the full cost of, the full service has been moved from the finance department to the comptroller's office.
So my question, as you talked about CDL workers, have we increased the salary? Because if you didn't increase the salary, we're just going to have a bunch of opening positions again. And we created 10 new crews, and we haven't even filled the ones we got yet. That just doesn't make sense to me. So you got 35 positions you opened up, and you got another, more than that, that has not been filled, and then you didn't even increase the CDL driver's salary?
For sure. So the, the CDL driver classifications are part of the AFSCME labor group, and so it's part of the union. This incentive doesn't impact base wages, but it gets paid out quarterly over eight installments. And so based off of when the, the program started, it will go through fiscal 25. And I think as part of that, the city, it will be certainly looking at how to address the base wage issue associated with those classifications.
And my last question, I'm going to go back to wrecking parks. Have the budget have an increase for wrecking parks for programming? I didn't hear you say it unless I missed it. There has to be an increase in the budget for wrecking parks for our young people, because right now, the money for wrecking parks is only salaries and benefits. So we talking about what's happening, happening with our young people in this city, but we have not, not put money where it need to be in terms of our young people walking past rec centers like it's not there. So I don't see nothing in the budget where wrecking parks need a big increase in terms of programming in the city, in all rec centers.
Yes. So the, the budget for rec centers maintains the, the current level of service going into fiscal 24, and also includes the opening costs of the, the new facility that will be opening in fiscal 24.
I'm going to go back and say it. So there was no increase for wrecking parks for program. That's unbelievable. About all the things that's going on in this city with our young people, and this budget does not reflect more funding for every rec center in this city. We got all these recs, and we don't need no more rec centers. We need program to young people that can get involved, that understand that they can come through the center. And you got a new budget, and there's still not no increase in funding for programs. And all this stuff that's going on in the city, and nobody, look like it's not a priority to me for young people. When they got to go down to Harbor and think they got to, you know, enjoy themselves, that's a problem. You know how many rec centers they walk past? You know why they ain't gone? Because every rec center got a basketball and a football program. After that, it's nothing that interests our young people in this city. And you tell me that y'all got a new budget coming out, and there's no increase in wrecking parks for program. That is unbelievable. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. And I know we'll have more time to talk about that, and we flagged that for you in the letter that we sent to the CAO. That's something we've heard from a number of our colleagues. I'm going to turn it over to Vice President Middleton.
I just wanted to add, concur and add with what my colleague just said, and also from the previous question about older, the, creating that older adult office. Wrecking Parks, you know, they do have some programs for older adults as well. And now that this new office is being, you know, reinvented, wrecking, wrecking parks needs money for enhanced programming for older adults as well. This is all about the part, this is how you work those partnerships in with really just about every agency. You, and you want to connect our youth with older adults to, you know, create that inter, you know, that, that connection. So please, we really need to think about adding more money with programming. We have new rec centers that are coming up. We have many that are being renovated and that sit right in communities that are, of homeowners that are still active in their communities.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Councilwoman Ramos, and I ask that we just be cognizant of time. We're going to have a hard stop at 4:00, and we're about to get Baltimore City Public Schools on. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. I have a couple of other questions. One was, it was my understanding that the right to council commitment was like $2 million to fully fund the program, and it only, your presentation only talked about the $500,000.
That's just the general fund share, and then there's the, the remainder of the funding is in, is funded through the Community Development Block Program.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we were still on tax-
Yes.
-to get that fully funded this year.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Great. And we'll see that, obviously, in the agency detail then.
That's correct.
I'm working through it. I'm working through it. Okay, great. Thank you. And then also on question on the revenue side, I, the definition of what happened with the Medicaid dollars for young, for our schools count in this book, it seems different than what you described. And the school system is nodding their head. So I don't know if we want to wait till the school system to have that, but my understanding of what, what this book says is that the, the Medicaid, the state decided to utilize Medicaid, families on Medicaid to count poverty rather than free and reduced lunch.
That's correct.
Which totally makes sense. That's going to actually capture more people. And in Baltimore, we already give every kid free and reduced lunch, no matter what, you know, income they are. That is a choice, a policy choice that has been made forever and ever. And, well, not forever, but close, you know. And so my understa, the book says that because we have been classified as, whatever we were classified, because we give our kids, all the kids, free and reduced lunch, that we then were not included in the numbers, if I understand correctly, the numbers that the state was looking at. What I heard you say was that because we provide free and reduced lunch for everybody, and our count went up anyway because of the Medicaid count, that we were compared to everybody else, or all of the others counties, and because their numbers went up significantly, then we were tasked with providing more dollars because we are compared to other jurisdictions.
Yeah.
So it's a slight difference?
So, yeah, I'll, I'll defer the, the compensatory education component of the formula to our colleagues from the schools. I mean, I will say the, the big, and I think that impacted the state funding share, because, you know, the formula has the state share and the local share.
Correct.
Where, where the local share was really impacted, and where we saw the bulk of the increase come from, was falling out of that 100% tier-
Correct.
-for the education effort adjustment. That, that's what drove the bulk of the much higher increase. That was above what we had previously anticipated.
And that was a combination of increased income, but also the increased property assessments for, for calculating wealth.
Yes. But it's also, and then it's looking at sort of your, the, the local jurisdictions' funding that they're putting towards schools. And because, you know, the wealthier jurisdictions are so much higher than MOE, when we all get indexed together, it, it's a, it's a, it's a challenging formula for, for the city, because, you know, we're just in a different place than some of those other jurisdictions.
Right. Okay. Well, either way, we've got to fully fund our schools, so that is our commitment to doing that. I was just curious about the formula.
Yep.
And then my other question, it goes back to what my colleague was talking about in terms of getting money out the door. We still have grantees for CDPG and Catalyst Grant that are like 18 months to a year behind in getting money. And I know that once it's encumbered, it comes out of our budget, so we don't see it in the following year. I think that's what your answer was.
Yes, yes.
But we've got to improve that. Like, that is insanity. People can't be waiting, especially organizations that don't have cash flow, for that amount of money. So just want to figure out what it is that the commissioner needs to, like, get that done, and I will ask her during budget hearings. But it seems behoove of the finance department to try to figure out what that is as well, because, you know, you don't want to, we don't want to leave money on the, on the table.
Yeah. We, we share that same goal. Yep, we share that same goal.
Yeah. Oh, shoot, I have one more question. Mr. Chair, I have one quick last question. Thank you very much. In the executive summary, and it shows that in two different places, in one place, it says that we're paying for a hotel. In another place, it says that we're paying for two hotels in, for the, the MOHS. I'm wondering, what exactly are we going to end up paying for? And because of the delay in any acquisition, is it going to be difficult, more difficult for us, because now we actually don't have FEMA money to pay for it?
So MOHS has been working to identify, identifying other sources that they can tap in in order to preserve ARPA dollars for the acquisition costs. And the director, the director from MOHS can speak more regarding the plans, but I will say that there are, it's an active process in terms of negotiating regarding the, the hotel situation. And she can, when she's here for her hearing next week, can give a status update of where that's at.
I just don't know whether that's going to be impacted by the fact that we delayed for so long. We were going to use FEMA money and get reimbursed for it, and now we can't.
So the, so the, the acquisition costs were anticipated to be funded with the ARPA allocation. Again, MOHS is, is working to preserve as much of those ARPA dollars as possible so that they can be used for the acquisition costs and getting that, getting, getting any new facilities up and running.
Oh, okay. So it's ARPA, it's not FEMA that was going to be used?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the indulgence.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman James Torrance. Colleagues, any other questions on the overview? Okay, excellent. We're now in recess on this one. Just as a reminder, we're not taking public testimony today during this. Public testimony on all three bills will occur during Baltimore City Council Taxpayers Night, which is this evening at 6:00 PM. One last housekeeping item, we're going to have a hard stop on the Baltimore City Public Schools portion of this hearing, as we have a sale of property bill at 4:00 PM promptly. So with that, we will now go to Mayor and City Council Resolution 23-0383, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. If you could please state your name and position title for the record.
Sure. Good day, everyone. My name is Courtney Desabey. I'm the Special Assistant to Chief Financial Officer for City Schools. So I'm going to take you through our overview All right. So our proposed FY '24 budget is 1.704864429, so $1.7 billion. That $1.7 billion, we break it out into three main ways, of course. So we have our general funds, which is the majority of our funding, our restricted funds, which have restricted reporting requirements, and our enterprise funds, which are the federally reimbursed funds for food services. So in addition to these revenue sources, of course, we have revenues or funds that we have received in other fiscal years that have extended expenditure periods, like our Essar and ARP grants. Those that run through 93024, where we can still obligate funding up till that period. This next view is a look at our Kerwin funding. So in the $1.7 billion that I stated, it's a combination of our Kerwin funding and our grant funds and our other different funding sources. So this is a subset of that $1.7. So Kerwin funds $1.5 billion for the $1.7 billion budget. This is an increase from the $1.42 billion that we had in fiscal year '23. Fiscal year '23, the first year of Kerwin marked a large increase in the prior year, was about $200 million, so 22% increase. The increase this year is about 6%, $79 million altogether. The funding here, and we'll talk about it on the next slide, is broken, is composed of funding from multiple sources, our state and local sources. But on this slide, we do have a breakdown by the different fund types. Of the various fund streams, the, most of them were increases, the largest increases being concentration of poverty and foundation. Compensatory funding was a slight decrease. And included in this amount, we also have the one-time hold harmless amount that was attributed from the state to make up the difference from the state appropriation amount from the prior year. So in this view, we're breaking out the general fund revenue by our different sources. So main sources, of course, are state and local. So the state accounts for about $998 million. The difference between that and the 1.1 that you see in the Kerwin slide previously is that there are portions of the state funding, like concentrations of poverty and the transition supplemental instruction- and the transition supplemental instruction grant, that we consider grant, grant funds and restricted funds. Same with the City of Baltimore, so we have $388 million here. Because of the $392 million that we get from the city, there's $4 million that we consider restricted funding as part of the TSI grant. And the breakdown between the different fund sources, of course, is dictated by the state funding formula. In addition to those sources, we have 1% is a contribution from our other revenue sources. So that's a combination of our federal, we have E-rate reimbursements, we have treasury bond subsidies, ROTC reimbursements, investment earnings, MSA revenue, et cetera, that make up, you know, the bulk of that 18 million. All right, these are last two slides. So the first one here, we break out for our budgeting, how the budget is expended across the different categories. So this is a view that we like to use to demonstrate how the funding is separated. We have what we call our principal control budgets, so those are the funds that go directly to schools. And principals have direct oversight as to how those budgets are allocated, within reason and with support, of course. We go through what we call our budget collaboratives. No principal is ever building their budget in isolation, they're supported by their finance team, their human capital team, the folks from teaching and learning who, you know, monitor our CO-MAR requirements, et cetera. But this is the portion that the principals have direct budgeting overview and insight into how they allocate. In addition to that, we have the orange slice of the pie, which is our school supports budgeted centrally. So these are items that are budgeted in central office but on behalf of schools, and we break those out on the next slide. Here, we also have our central office, debt service, non-distributable fringe, and reserves as well. So on this view, as I mentioned, we break out those school supports budgeted centrally. So these are items that are housed within the district office budget but on behalf of schools. So the largest category in here is transportation, so like our yellow bus contracts. We also have our utilities, which is also slightly increased for fiscal year '24. We have our athletic contracts and athletic supports. We have the supports for our chief academic officer, a lot of that is our related services. So aides, psychiatrists, sociologists, et cetera. We have our non-admin and operations, so building maintenance contracts, that'll make up the bulk of that. HVAC, et cetera. Our home and hospital services. For our IT, we have our LAN WAN blackboard, Oracle subscriptions, et cetera. For our non-pub, these are essentially the funds that we pay to other jurisdictions to support our students, that we are unable to provide the extent of the services that are required within the district. That's actually an area that's gone down over the last five years or so. It used to be about double what it was, it used to be about 50 million, it's down to about 24 million as we've improved our ability to provide those services within the district. We have our school police and our school supports, which are largely like the school principals, supervisors, IEDs, et cetera. So those are the components, while housed in the central, are really supports designed on behalf of schools. So we always call those out to identify what those funding sources are. All right, do we have any questions?
Thank you for your brevity.
Colleagues.
Councilman Torrance.
Okay, I'm new to this. Good?
Perfect.
We all are.
So I have a series of questions from conversations I've seen across the district in terms of like where my schools are and where principals are. So my first question is related to teacher positions, the unfilled teacher positions. How do we repurpose them, and how do we guide principals through the process of using those funds?
Last year, being the first year of our, our Kerwin funding and the biggest increase, we started a process where earlier in the year, we reviewed the status of our position vacancies. And we've also allowed principals to do things that we haven't before in terms of reallocating that funding instead of waiting till enrollment adjustments during the summer, as we kind of monitor what those vacancies look like. We've also provided additional guidance in terms of how that funding can be allocated and spent in terms of supported programs, things that we have researched on and done some background on that we think are related investments for those schools. So of course, the push this year is to staff as much as possible, and we've done a lot and made a lot of headway in terms of staffing, proactively taking actions towards that course. But again, we are providing more flexibility for the individual schools to make determinations as to how they can reallocate that funding within their budget. We're also, during the course of the year, providing greater oversight as to the current spending status of their funds. So we're monitoring and we're sending out reports monthly as to what the status is of their unspent funds so that we can reallocate those funds and help them spending those dollars as well.
Yeah, I just want to, Courtney, everything Courtney said is correct. I just want to add one thing, which is that, you know, we kind of had a perfect storm, just emphasize that we had a perfect storm last year in terms of we had the big increase that Courtney talked about, that, from Kerwin, at the same time, there was a national teaching shortage. And so, we did, we hired more teachers last year than we ever have, and so we were, we were able to kind of get ahead of some of the shortages that other jurisdictions saw. And given the large number of teacher vacancies we had from these additional resources, we weren't able to fill them all. So in a normal year, which is normal attrition, we have about 600 vacancies in a given year due to attrition. Last year, we had 1,300 positions because people had created these new Kerwin positions. So as Courtney said, we were able to then work with schools in the summer to identify which ones were just not realistic to fill, given the, the national landscape and that our, even our partner programs like TFA and Urban Teachers were producing less teachers than they ever had, which we had never seen that before. So, we allowed those schools to repurpose their resources, and then throughout the year, as Courtney said, we've helped them spend it. And you will see it in schools. I was just in Franklin Square the other day, and Principal Roberts was showing me the, he's changed his LED lighting. Like, there's, there's improvements he's made to his school that are way overdue and much needed in, in our schools. So there's a lot of investments our, our schools need, and they've been able to, with the guidance of the finance department, be able to make those investments in their schools.
I have a committee request. I would like to actually see school by school what those investments went to. The reason why is because I think about one school in my district that tried to repurpose the funding for laptops and computers, but still has not received that much support from the district on it. So I'm just being clear that like, while there was guidance and support, what is the actuality in terms of those funds? So I would like to see it school by school for the entire district. In terms- Yes, ma'am. I would like to see the unused teacher vacancy funds, how they were repurposed school by school in terms of whether it was physical updates to the actual school building, allocations to actual programming in the building, in addition to that, or any other funds that they use in terms of retention, especially for staff. My next line of questioning is related to staff retention.
Hang on one second. Realistically, what's a, what's a timeframe by which you think we can get the, the school by school request?
I'll take it after reconciliation. Why don't you close your books?
Sorry, say again?
I'll give you to September.
After we reconcile yourself?
Yeah.
Is that, is that reasonable? Yes, we could do that. Okay. Councilman, I'm going to, because we're not taking formal requests today, what I'm going to ask, because we're not starting that process until Tuesday morning, what I'm going to ask is if you could put that in writing via email and send that to me directly, and I'll make sure we get that over, and that'll be a request that we reiterate during the City Schools hearing. Just because we've set up a new tracking process for this year with the mayor's office and finance and the council president's office, so I just want to make sure we don't lose track of it. Thank you, Councilman, appreciate it.
And then for my next question, and more so, this will be predating my next week. It's related to paraprofessionals. Our non-instructional parents are still at a point where their wages may be above $15 an hour, but they're still struggling. They're our working class persons in our buildings, as well as our school secretaries. I would like to know if the district will be interested in actually pursuing an analysis to assist in increasing their salaries drastically, because, one, those persons are currently doing tutoring in our buildings and supporting our buildings in a different way. So I would like to make sure that those who more than likely in city schools, who are city residents, have fair wages and are able to support the children that they serve. So I just want to prelude with that, but I yield back to the chair.
Thank you. One thing I want to flag, which we put in the letter to the CAO, and I know we had an opportunity to talk about this last week, is an expectation of having a full conversation around the timeline of what the requirement for MOE is this year and how those figures have evolved and key milestones that have occurred along the way, and kind of putting all that on a timeline. So just as a reminder. Colleagues, Madam VP, any questions? You're up.
Thank you. On the chart, I guess it's page six, centralized budgeting, school support. I'm looking at athletics and then also school police. And 1% in athletics is just really, we need more money. As a matter of fact, I know the, our council president has kind of honed in on, he had put in a resolution that I guess we're going to be talking about the importance of athletics in middle school. It's something I think that parents are really talking about more so now than, because of us getting out of COVID, and the importance of physical activity for our young people is just so important for the mind and body. So I think, you know, money, we really kind of need to focus on that as well. I think it's, you know, having that added piece in there will, you know, help create a better student.
Yeah.
And then school police, there's been more talk about that. You know how the school system has had incidents, incidents with guns in school. In my district, I know that there is, Frederick Douglass is going to be coming over to Garrison Middle, and we had our first meeting, and a school police, no one was there representing, and that raised red flags. So, I know there's been shortages and so on. So I think the school police needs help in concentration as well overall for our city and connected in partnerships with our regular police departments, the Safe Streets programs and so on that we have in the city. So, I think there can be help with that, but we need to really focus on increasing the support. Your comments?
Yes. So the athletics 1% that we have here does not represent all the athletic spending. So first of all, this is just kind of pulling out the general funds. We have a lot of athletic investments, and we'll see those in the highlights that we talk about next week on the investments for a lot of those athletic programs, specifically middle school and the high school athletics. So this is just like within the central office, the portion that's not principal controlled. And so also within the schools portion, that's 74% of the school's budget, there's also spending in there from the school level for athletics as well. One of the other things that we did this year, as I mentioned, one of the biggest increases was the concentrations of poverty. And there are different ways in which those dollars can be allowed to be spent. So we provided guidance to schools as well as to how those dollars could be spent to support athletics, and we gave them sort of a per pupil amount that they could budget, you know, within each school's budget to support their athletic programs, and they designed the programs and reported back some of that. So, the 1% is misleading, there is a lot more athletic spending outside of that. Like I said, we'll expand on that a little bit in the presentation next week.
Thank you, that's good to know.
And on school police, we too are aware of the fact that, like Councilman Torrance pointed out with some of our other positions, school police is one too, where we are not on market in terms of the competitive wages that we're offering. And so that is one thing we are working on, is salaries for school police. So that, you'll be hearing more about that lately, but more soon. But we are working on, the issue about salaries is making it very difficult to fill positions when our wages are not competitive at all.
Thank you, that's great to hear. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCray. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I get an answer to my previous question about the Medicaid formula? Again, only simply to just try to understand what, what happened.
Yeah, so Courtney, you might have to help, Courtney, you might have to help me here a little bit. But I think the way that the city, I don't know as well frankly, how the city's wealth is calculated. I don't think that Medicaid is part of it. Medicaid factors into how our poverty is calculated. But I don't think it's part of the, the city's calculation, in terms of-
It's the state money that would be, the compensatory money is state money, right? So the formula change was affected our state allocation.
Yes, the state allocation that we received. And so, the issue with the Medicaid is a very serious issue, which is that because, as you pointed out, because we're a community eligibility provision district, we don't collect forms anymore. So we, our, our poverty is counted through direct certification, meaning students who we already know are on TANA for SNAP.
Right.
And so that is a more concentrated form of poverty. It is a more proxy for poverty than, than, FARMs is not a great count of poverty either. But it is a more concentrated form of poverty than FARMs. And, and so when you count that way, we are poor enough, to your point, that all of our students can eat for free. But that is, because it's a more concentrated form of poverty, when we switched over to that, and I think it was 2016 was the first year, we locked into legislation that our poverty is counted, has been counted on the 2015, the penultimate year of, that we collected forms, of our FARMs rate. Because, so that was at 84.9%. That's how our poverty has been counted all this time. We, when the state added Medicaid as a form of counting poverty, what happened is it identified a number of more students in the state that qualify for poverty. And so, as a result, the state contributed $390 million more for poverty. However, we were completely left out of that. Because of that, the way Kerwin works is there's multiple different ways a district could count poverty. They pick the highest. For us, the highest is that 84.9% FARMs rate from 2015. But in 2015, Medicaid was not counted. So while we have students who are on Medicaid, they're not in our count. And so, our choice was, so for other districts, the way FARMs works is there's your direct cert rate, that's always part of any school's poverty count. There's your free rate, and there's your reduced rate.
Right.
In ours, we are, we are counted based on our FARMs rate from 2015, so we had direct, free, and FARMs then. The comparison that we were allowed under the law was either to use that, the 2015 rate, that had those three pieces to it, or use our current direct cert rate plus Medicaid. Every other jurisdiction now has direct cert, free, reduced, and Medicaid. Our choice was direct plus Medicaid or free and reduced. Free and reduce is more than direct plus Medicaid, but it is not equivalent to the other jurisdictions. So out of the $390 million that the state put into poverty, Baltimore City students got not one nickel of that. And it's hugely problematic, and we need a consistent way to count poverty at the state level, and we are working on it and appreciate any help on that.
So that is a change that needs to be made at the General Assembly level so that the, the city can be compared fairly-
Yes.
-with the rest of the state in terms of what the, how everybody's counting poverty, basically.
Yes, and Superintendent Choudry has a mechanism that is based on the American Community Surveys Index, the Neighborhood indicators of Poverty, that is a much more nuanced, apples-to-apples way to count poverty across the state, because it uses census data across each jurisdiction, and it gives an even comparison of what every jurisdiction is in terms of their poverty. And when you use that, you see what we all in Baltimore know, which is that the poverty in Baltimore is much broader and much deeper than you see it in any other jurisdiction. And so, it is a better way to, to count, a comparative way of counting poverty that would deliver more resources to Baltimore City.
And that just would reflect, that, that wouldn't impact our local share. It would impact how much money, how much more money we would get from the state.
I-
The compensatory amount does have a local component, so it would impact a little bit the local share.
Which is fine, I'm just curious. I mean, obviously, we want to fully fund our, be able to make sure that we're supporting all of our students. I just want to make sure that we're, I understand the story of what we're trying to do here, so that we can be good advocates.
So this is where I don't know as much.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying, the compensatory education amount does have a state and local component. So it would impact the local component as well, the local share.
So it would. So let's say, we get this change in the Dental Assembly next year. So the 2025 budget would have the amount that we're obligated to Kerwin at the moment with the current formula, plus potentially an additional amount for the compensatory, depending on what happens with this formula.
Correct.
Do you know what that amount might be?
No, I think we've done a couple of studies on it, but it depends on which of the methodology.
Well, I can follow up with you on that. We don't have to make a request now. And this is, this is more from my knowledge to be able to help figure this out.
Yeah, I'm just discussing if I could remember what Superintendent Choudry's study showed in terms of the amount that we would have gotten under his model. I think it was 212 million, something like that, additional, that we would receive.
Uh huh. And I guess we can have an offline political conversation about what is going on here, so, okay. I appreciate that. My second question is about, and I understand we're running low on time. The Kerwin, I believe it says in the book here that 130- The Kerwin, I believe it says in the book here that 133 schools currently have community schools, and are we getting all schools finally a community school coordinator with the new funding?
So, there are, so this is related to your poverty question. So, because of that 2015 poverty rate that we're counted on, you actually, so, there are going to be more schools that are poverty. We actually don't want that, which is, that are going to count for the community schools coordinator. We actually don't want that, and I'll explain to you why. So, because we are counted on that 2015 rate of 84.9%, under the Concentrations of Poverty count, what the state does is a rolling average of three years.
Right.
They used to use a kind of an individual count they had of school level poverty that they had created from, it's too complicated to go into, they used to have an individual count. What they did this year for the first time is they replaced that, for two, two of the three years that they count, they replaced that individual school level count with the 84.9% and applied it to every school. Next, so, and what that means is that for this year, for the first time, schools like Roland Park counted as poverty, because their poverty was lower than that 84.9% district average. They have two years where they're averaging with 84.9%, so they raised up. A school like Santan Winchester, which under the way it used to be counted was already above 100%, but counted as 100% poverty, they got 84.9% averaged in for two years, so they came down. So Roland Park and Santan Winchester came close to each other. Next year, if this continues, again, this is why we need a poverty count, if this continues, every school in Baltimore will be three-year average of 84.9%, which means that Roland Park and Santan Winchester will be the same.
That makes no sense. That totally defeats the purpose of what Kerwin was supposed to do.
Exactly. So this is one of the many reasons why we need a poverty count and why we need the Neighborhood indicators count, because that is ridiculous.
Because they're, they're, the way that they're doing the formula now is just applying it across the board as opposed to school by school, which that doesn't make any sense.
Yes, it's Concentrations of Poverty for a reason. It's supposed to be identifying the differences in Concentrations of Poverty, and the Neighborhood indicators does a much more refined way of that.
Of course, it's a much better way of doing it, yeah.
Of course.
Because it's also looking at the environment in which students are living.
Yes, it's looking at multiple, it's a much more nuanced look. It's looking at median household income, it's looking at single-family households.
No, but counting all the schools the same doesn't make any sense.
No.
Gotcha.
So this year, just one piece of context, is this year, for traditional schools, if we had followed it to the, like, if we followed it literally, we would have to take, because that happened after we gave money out to schools. So we would have to take money away from the Santan Winchesters of the world in order to give it to the lower poverty schools.
Yeah, but you didn't want to do that.
We did not do that.
You went ahead and made the math where...
We, we hold back some money on the central, for our concentrated poverty plan from our traditional schools, so we were able to use that to give the community schools coordinators to those schools who are now poverty who weren't before without taking it from the higher poverty schools in hopes that next year, we get a legislative fix so we don't have to continue with this.
Right, and so, community schools, social workers, healthcare workers, all fall under those types of, that type, that, that would be applied, right? So it's, community schools is one piece of the funding that would, or the, the result of the funding that would be in the schools of concentrated poverty.
So, on Concentration of Poverty, the pieces that are required under, that all schools must have is a nurse, which they all do, and the, and the community schools coordinator, and then there are other wraparound services that can be things like you mentioned, like a social worker or other programming like...
Oh, I see what you're saying. So they, they all get these, it's just a matter of how they're funded, so that, you know, some schools, if they're, if they were getting the higher Concentration of Poverty rate, then that would go to those resources, but if they're not getting it, then you have to find some other way to fund it.
They have to use their other resources.
Yeah.
Because the point of that money was supposed to be to provide additional resources to the schools that truly are Concentrations of Poverty who need additional support.
Yeah. Wow. Okay, thanks. There's a lot here that I need to sort of chew on and then come back to you, because there's obviously something wrong with the formula if that's not getting us where we're supposed to go.
That's right.
And that's not something that we can do. That's something that we need, we can be advocates, but we can't change it.
It's a state law issue, yes.
Uh huh, okay. All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting us get into detail there.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Okay, we are going to go into recess. Thank you very much. We will reconvene at 4:00 PM sharp. Thank you.